Join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amaditz? Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Dobus?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Here.
Mrs. Ruhl?
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza?
Present.
Mr. Workmeister?
Here.
We have eight members present this evening.
Thank you. Last month, we recognized our world and national champion Bethel Park High School cheerleaders, and this month, it is our pleasure to recognize our two 2016 Whipple individual champions. Bethel Park High School senior diver Maria Capozzi has worked extremely hard over the years to improve her diving technique, and this year, all of her hard work paid off and was justifiably rewarded with a coveted prize, the 2016 Whipple diving championship. Last year, Maria, you finished in eighth place at the Whipple championships, so we can only assume that to move up seven places and capture the championship in your final year of competition made all the long hours of practice, training, and sacrifice worth it. Winning the Whipple has also enabled Maria to compete at the state diving championships, where she finished in 18th place. Maria, in recognition of a great season, it is the board's pleasure to present you this evening a certificate of recognition to commemorate your 2016 Whipple diving championship. We are extremely proud of your accomplishments and wish you well in your future endeavors. Would you please give me a round of applause for Maria, and Maria, please join me. It is also our pleasure this evening to recognize Bethel Park High School wrestler Nino Bonaccorsi. Nino is a junior, but he has already established himself as one of the top wrestlers in the Whipple, having won two section championships last year and this year, and adding a 2016 Whipple individual championship to his impressive wrestling resume. As a Whipple champion, Nino represented the Whipple at the state wrestling championships, where he finished in second place, and while that was not his intended goal, he can still hold his head high and be proud of the fact that he is Bethel Park's first state wrestling finalist. And I'm sure he also already has his sights set on that goal in 2017, right? Nino, in recognition of your great season, it is the board's pleasure to also present you with a certificate of recognition to commemorate you being a 2016 state finalist as well as the Whipple and section champion. We are very proud of your accomplishments. A round of applause for Nino, and please join me.
Wow, again, congratulations, both of you. Wonderful.
Well, about this time last year, we were commending Bethel Park Technology Director Ron Ryer for being named a finalist for the Pittsburgh Technology Council's Chief Information Officer of the Year in Education. And while Ron did not receive that particular award, I mentioned that he is still a winner in our books. This year, Ron was nominated by the Pennsylvania Association for Education Communications and Technologies for its 2016 Chief Technology Officer of the Year, and my words from last year must have been a foreshadowing of what was to come. This year, it is my pleasure to recognize Ron as the 2016 PAECT Technology Officer of the Year. This award is given to an individual who is a pioneer and champion of the uses of technology in K-12 education through leadership, community building, innovative use of technology, creation of partnerships, and impact on learning. Ron, you easily embody all of those criteria. Through your leadership, you have brought the successful One-to-One Chromebook initiative to Bethel Park, which is now an exemplary model that other school districts are using. You partnered with Google to bring the Google for Education platform to Bethel Park, and you encouraged Google to host an education summit at their headquarters last spring, which also featured several Bethel Park employees leading workshop topics. You partnered with Tretsey to bring the Three Rivers Educational Technology Conference to Bethel Park High School this fall, which showcased our beautiful high school to school districts throughout the region. You brought technology tools such as Safari Montage and Hapera to the district, giving our teachers an easier way to manage technology in their classrooms. You spearheaded the district's transition to Sun Guard, and while the transition was not an easy one, you spent countless hours working to make this new system a valuable resource for staff and parents. Your work on the Allegheny Intermediate Unit's R1 Rebid and Steering Committee was instrumental in making the R1 more reliable and as cost-effective as possible for member districts. And we thank you for the countless hours and energy that you put into your job. We are thrilled that you have been recognized in this fashion by PAECT. It is our honor to present you with this certificate of recognition for all of your contributions to make the Bethel Park School District a leader in educational technology and for your efforts to shine such a positive light on our school district. While Ron makes his way to the podium, I would ask the audience to join me in a round of applause for Ron, who is truly deserving of being named the 2016 PAECT Technology Director of the Year.
Just a couple of brief words. Thank you all for this recognition and for the opportunity to serve as the Technology Director for the school district. I mean, really, it's been a team effort, and without the support of this group of people up here and our great administrative and teaching staff and community, I wouldn't have this opportunity, so I thank you for that.
Thank you again. Oh, it's always great to start out on such positive notes. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
Circum.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries eight to zero. I need to... When it comes up. I need to... I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 23rd, 2016.
Circum.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries eight to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held March 9th, 2016, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. March 15th, 2016, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. And March 22nd, 2016, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report and Dr. Stark.
Good evening. We have lots more great news to share with you, both from within the classroom and on the athletic fields. Congratulations to the Bethel Park High School mock trial team, who for the second consecutive year qualified for the playoffs of the Allegheny County Mock Trial Championships. In the playoffs, they won their first two matches before losing in the final divisional round. Members of the mock trial team include Emily Augustine, Cassandra Brown, Jonathan Engel, Elizabeth Hartnett, Jennifer Clara, Natalie Lalama, Elliot Lehman, Sean McLean, Madison Newman, John Peters, Akil Rajah Shaker, and Grayden Tomkowitz. Congratulations to the students for a great season in only their third year of competition. The Bethel Park High School Science Bowl team finished in second place in Southwest PA, one victory away from competing at the National Science Bowl in Washington, DC. They won their division and earned the right to compete against the other three divisional winners for a chance at the national title. We are extremely proud of their efforts. Members of the team are Akil Rajah Shaker, Evan Aaronhold, Emily Augustine, Billy DePudaloff, and Max Reese. This year, 87 Bethel Park High School students competed at the 2016 DECA State Conference in Hershey, and when the competition ended, 30 students were named finalists, 25 will move on to the international competition next month in Nashville, and nine students received medallion awards. The results of the competition are on the screen in front of you, but we would like to recognize first-place students Sean McLean, Carolyn Vona, Emma Bruno, Justin Knapp, Cassidy DeLeo, Courtney Maslenka, Sammy Schweitzer, Paige Swindell, Natalie Lalama, Paige Davinson, and Maria Schiller. Additionally, Carolyn Vona was named the PA DECA Student of the Year and received three scholarships at the event. Kelsey Tischler also earned a scholarship, and Paige Davinson was elected to serve on the PA DECA Executive Council for the 2016-17 school year. Congratulations to all of the DECA students and good luck to the students who are moving on in the competitions. Twenty Bethel Park High School German students were honored for their outstanding result on the 2016 American Association of Teachers of Germans National German Exams, earning six gold awards, five silver awards, four bronze awards, and five high achievement awards. The highest scorer was Jack Brownfield, who earned a gold award on the Level Four exam for finishing in second place among the 109 Western PA students who took the exam. Also earning gold awards were Brendan Tresh, Corinne Habastreit, Thomas Weber, Joe Wasco, and Grant Wilson. Congratulations to all of our German students. Bethel Park High School senior Emily Augustine was named the National Speech and Debate Association's Pittsburgh District Student of the Year. She was chosen by a panel of forensic team coaches from among the more than 1,200 student forensics team members at the 33 Western PA high schools who participate in forensics competitions. Emily is now among the 110 students who will be considered for the National Student of the Year. Emily was also selected to be a member of the five-student team from Western PA, who will represent the region at the 2016 USA World Schools Debate Invitational, where she will compete against teams from all over the world when the event is held in June in Salt Lake City. Emily was a part of this team last year as well. Congratulations to Emily. Bethel Park High School freshman Riley Barkey was named a winner in Think Through Maths Students Love Math Contest sponsored by Think Nation. Riley will receive a $50 Amazon gift card, a commemorative certificate, a Think Through Math t-shirt, and recognition on the organization's website, blog, and monthly newsletter. Riley was nominated by Bethel Park High School math teacher James O'Neil in recognition of Riley's efforts to do what she needed to do to not only grasp math concepts but also to excel in them. Congratulations for persevering to achieve success, Riley. Approximately 300 Bethel Park High School biology students participated in a three-day lab with UPMC researchers to determine if GMOs, that's genetically modified organisms, are present in some of their favorite snack foods. The students brought in bags of food such as corn flakes, Doritos, Cheetos, Fritos, Taco Shells, tortilla chips, and corn muffin mix, to name a few. They ground up the food and mixed it with a chemical enzyme solution that separated the DNA so they could study it further. I'm sorry to tell you this, but their findings show that the majority of foods made with corn and soybeans showed the presence of GMOs, so you might want to think about that the next time you buy a bag of snacks. Some of the equipment used for this experiment was purchased with a $5,000 innovative classroom grant from PPG written by biology teacher Barbara Isel. This is the second year that UPMC researchers have come to the high school to work on cutting-edge experiments with our students, and we thank Mrs. Isel for her work to coordinate this The Steel Center for Career and Technical Education awarded the top-of-the-shop awards for the first semester of the 2015-16 school year to six Bethel Park High School students. Congratulations to Nicole Braga, Amanda Len, John Smith, Jeremy Simsek, Kelsey Gensler, and Michael Pauline. These awards are presented to those students who demonstrate outstanding attitude, work ethic, and dependability. Congratulations to Steel Center students Austin Stephan and Rachel Hatfield, who placed among the top two in their respective events at the District Eight Skills USA Competition. Austin finished in first place in the Industrial Motor Control Event and will advance to the Regional Skills USA Competition next month. Rachel and Paige Williams will compete at the Regional Skills USA Competition in the Community Service Team Competition, and Kelsey Gensler will participate at Regionals in the Health Knowledge Bowl Team Competition. Good luck to all of these students. The Mon Valley School presented Golden Hammer Awards to two Bethel Park students, Andrew Dixon, a student in the Material Handling Program, and Austin Peters, a student in the Auto Mechanics Program. These awards honor the contributions of the vocational students at the Mon Valley School who strive to do their best, are able to persevere, and be adaptable, competent, and reliable. Congratulations to Andrew and Austin. Seven Bethel Park High School students participated in Influence to Youth Action Sessions at the Disability Summit, sponsored by State Representative Dan Miller. This event provided the students with the opportunity to meet students from other school districts, participate in self-advocacy activities, learn how to network with potential employers at the Employment and Transition Fair, and interact with elected officials at a legislative panel presentation. Representing Bethel Park at this event were students Ellie McGregor, Jeremy Cutler, Shelby Garcia, Brendan Carosa, Ronnie Schiller, Greg Dwayne, and Brian Garlick. They had a great time participating in this program and appreciated the networking opportunities. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Carolyn Vona, Senior Carolyn Vona, as its February Rotary Student of the Month. Each month during the school year, the Rotary Club recognizes Bethel Park High School students for outstanding commitment to school and/or community. Carolyn was recognized for her work with the Student Government Association, specifically the work she does as the chair of the Random Acts of Kindness Committee, her fundraising efforts with the cheerleaders to benefit Social Olympics, and the time she spends cheering at Special Olympics events, and also for her work as a DECA State Officer to encourage DECA chapters statewide to support DECA charities. Bethel Park High School sophomore Laney Drehutz was invited to speak at the recent Junior Achievement Board Dinner Meeting at the Weston Convention Center Hotel. She did a great job speaking about her experience at the JA College Day at LaRoche University and representing Bethel Park at this regional event. Congratulations go to Bethel Park High School musicians Jacob Lisak and Joe Wasco, who successfully auditioned and will represent Bethel Park High School in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's All-State Orchestra Concert, which will be held during the PMEA State Conference in Hershey. Our winter sports season recently concluded, and our teams and athletes were extremely successful. We had two Whipple champions, Nina Bonaccorsi in wrestling and Maria Capozzi in diving. Nino was also our first state wrestling finalist, finishing in second place in the 170-pound weight class at the state wrestling championships, and he was also the section and Whipple champion at 170 pounds. Our cheerleaders won the national and world championships in Orlando. Our boys' basketball team advanced to the Whipple Quarterfinals and competed in the state playoffs. Our girls' basketball team also advanced to the Whipple Quarterfinals and was one victory away from participating in the state playoffs. Swimmer Nick Friday finished in eighth place at the Whipple Championships in the 50-meter freestyle event, and Kelsey Love finished in eighth place in the 200-meter freestyle. The hockey team qualified for the Penguin Cup Playoffs. Congratulations to all of our athletes and coaches on memorable seasons. Independence Middle School Team 7C recently honored two current team members and one former team member for their dedication to their team and country. Elijah Sparing received a certificate of leadership for being Team 7C Conqueror's first mascot and future cadet. Elijah was recognized for obeying school orders and rules and for the unity and school spirit he has created for the team. Brock Domon received a certificate of leadership for being Team 7C Conqueror's first young Marine. Brock has worked hard to improve his grades and attitude and has become a good classmate and team member. Bethel Park High School junior John Peters presented the certificates to Elijah and Brock and then received a certificate of leadership from Team 7C. John was on Team 7C when he was an Independence Middle School student, and he regularly comes back to visit to share his experiences with the students as a naval sea cadet. John's certificate of leadership recognizes that he is Team 7C Conqueror's first naval sea cadet. Congratulations to Elijah, Brock, and John. Keep on being great leaders. Independence Middle School 7th grader Michaela Yee was the winner of the American Legion Post 760's essay contest. Michaela's essay on the topic "Has America Changed Because of Her Veterans?," explained, earned her first place in the contest, which was sponsored by the American Legion Post in Bethel Park. As the winner of the contest, Michaela had the opportunity to read her winning essay at the American Legion. She received $50, an engraved plaque, and a certificate from the American Legion in recognition of her work. Congratulations, Michaela. Independence Middle School 7th grader Katrina Koenig received a President's Volunteer Service Award from the 2016 Prudential Spirit of Community Awards Program in recognition of her volunteer service activities. As a Girl Scout, Katrina volunteers at the local Girl Scout Day Camp. When she was a student at Neil Armstrong Middle School, she tutored special education students. She also volunteers at the Bethel Park Public Library. As the President's Volunteer Service Award winner, Katrina received a certificate and a letter from President Barack Obama. The Prudential Spirit of Community Awards annually recognize middle-level and high school students across America for volunteer service. Congratulations, Katrina. Congratulations to Lincoln 3rd grader Jesse Huber, who won the Fourth Annual Bethel Park School District 3rd Grade Spelling Bee, sponsored by the Rotary Club of Bethel Park. As this year's winner, Jesse received a $150 Toys R Us gift card. Franklin 3rd grader Lila Walsh finished in second place and received a $100 Toys R Us gift card. Receiving a $50 Toys R Us gift card for finishing in third place was Memorial 3rd grader Caitlin Wolf. Thirty-eight spellers competed this year. As the winner of this year's bee, Jesse will now advance to the Rotary's Regional Spelling Bee, which will be held in June at Seven Springs, where he will compete against other Rotary 3rd Grade Spelling Bee winners from the area. Good luck in that event, Jesse. Lincoln students had a great time exploring the world of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math on STEAM Day. This first-ever event was organized by Lincoln staff in an effort to support Bethel Park's district-wide STEAM initiatives at the earliest levels. Lincoln was pleased to welcome guests from various STEAM-related organizations and occupations, including WQED, Carnegie Science Center, and Carlo University. Five Bethel Park High School teachers and 30 Bethel Park High School students were also on hand to help the younger students develop an interest in STEAM. The goal of the day was to expose students to STEAM careers by listening to speakers and engaging in a variety of learning opportunities that involve problem-solving and creative thinking. It was an outstanding day of learning, and the staff at Lincoln deserves special thanks for all their efforts to make this meaningful day for our students happen. The website niche.com gave the Bethel Park School District several favorable rankings. The district received a number-nine ranking among the 100 school districts in the Pittsburgh metro area, and Bethel Park High School also received a number-nine ranking among high schools in the Pittsburgh metro area. The rankings are based on statistics, student and parent reviews, and expert insights. Also contributing to the ranking were state test scores, college readiness, graduation rates, SAT and ACT scores, and teacher quality. Additionally, our district cafeterias received a number-two ranking based on student and parent interviews as well as per pupil expenditures. And last, but certainly not least, congratulations to the members of the Bethel Park Board of School Directors, who recently received local as well as national recognition. On March 17th, the board received the D. Richard Winn Award from the Tri-State Area School Study Council, which is affiliated with the University of Pittsburgh's Department of Administrative and Policy Studies at the School of Education. The award was presented to the 2013 through 2015 board members to acknowledge their demonstrated professionalism, integrity, and leadership in supporting an evolving culture of collaboration, improved relationships, and instructional innovation, all of which benefit the students of Bethel Park. Nationally, the board received an honorable mention in the 2016 Magna Awards in the districts with 5,000 or fewer students category from the National School Boards Association. As an honorable mention, the district will be recognized in the April issue of American School Board Journal. Congratulations to current and former board members Donna Cook, Russ Spicuzza, David Amaditz, Cindy Buckley, Tim Campbell, Pam Dobus, Jim Means, Connie Ruhl, and Chuck Schubel for these well-deserved recognitions. That concludes my report for this evening, but may we offer a round of applause to our board for this recognition.
Like we said that night, we don't do it for the accolades, but it sure is nice to once in a while be recognized. Student Government.
Hello, my name is Natalie Lalama, and I am the Senior School Board Representative for Bethel Park High School. So, Student Government just concluded our Wish Week, in which students write wishes and Random Acts of Kindness Committee Chair Carolyn Vona picks different wishes for Student Government to grant. So among those wishes were a pizza party for the custodial staff, a Monday morning coffee for the teachers, and my personal favorite, "Please do something to make Mr. Qualk smile." Today, actually, marked the end of the district-wide food drive, so that included all five elementary schools, Neil Armstrong, Independence, and the high school. So we're doing the official count tomorrow, but I can personally attest that we had over three truckloads of canned food to benefit the South Hills Interfaith Ministry, so it was a big success. And additionally, Student Government is beginning an SGA Scholarship Award this year, so that's led by the Community Service Committee. So there will be two $500 scholarships awarded to seniors that are moving on to higher education next year. So it's based on an application in which you detail your merit achievement in the high school and service to the community, and it'll be chosen by a panel of teachers. Thank you.
Great, that sounds wonderful, thank you. PTA, PTO Council.
Hello, I'm Tracy Fedko on behalf of the PTO Council, giving the report this evening. We're going to start with elementary schools. The Ben Franklin PTO just wrapped up their Fourth Annual Read-A-Thon. It kicked off with a book fair at Barnes &amp; Noble and ended with an event at the Bethel Park Library. Franklin raised over $3,500, and the students collectively read over 40,000 minutes. In the middle of the Read-A-Thon, the school hosted a Reading with the Stars event, where the local BP stars came to read to the students and talk about their chosen profession. The PTO is grateful for all the support of local BP professionals who took time out from their day, as well as teachers and librarians who were involved. PTO also hosted their first-ever magic show, which was a huge hit with both the children and the parents. For Abraham Lincoln, they held a Chick-fil-A Spirit Night on March 7th, as well as a Family Fun Night event on March 11th, where students and their families got to watch the movie Goosebumps in the all-purpose room, and concessions were available for purchase. Their annual Spring Science Fair and Art Expo is scheduled for April, and more than 60 students will be participating this year. STEAM Day at Lincoln was a huge success, and from the... STEAM Day at Lincoln was a huge success, and from the PTO and students' perspective, they were really happy with doing that. They want to thank all the guest speakers and exploratory station guests for volunteering their time and to help the students gain an understanding about learning and the world around them. They want also like to thank Mrs. Paz, Mrs. Lisak, and Mr. Johnson, and all the other Lincoln staff that helped with that project. Memorial School, they finished their second Sarah's fundraiser and sold more than $3,300 in chocolate. This was the last official fundraiser of the year, but they continue to have monthly Spirit Nights. TGI Fridays allowed Memorial to have a two-day Spirit Night where the families could go anytime for lunch or dinner to help earn money for the school. Memorial also hosted a Science and Art Expo, where kids from all five grades presented interesting experiments, tests, computer programming, and creative art. They would also like to mention two recent assemblies they have that were a little bit different and very successful. The one was the Queen of Hearts. It was an interpretive storyteller who goes to each classroom dressed in a theme and reads to the children. The second was Ion Jones, a science assembly provided by the Carnegie Science Center. The kids went on a journey to discover the elements they needed to collect and reach the castle of chemistry. Students were entertained while learning about science and watching experiments where things exploded, fizzed, and made loud noises. That's right up their alley. For George Washington, they held their Spring Scholastic Book Fair two weeks ago. All students received a free book courtesy of the PTO. Additionally, Washington had their Arts and Science Fair on March 11th. Congratulations to Kaylee Dalbon, Ava Knight, Anna Dugood, Sidney Abel, and Reese Campbell, who all won prizes for their science experiments. Washington's accelerated reading program ended on March 11th with a visit from the BP High School Drama Department students performing their Feed the Need to Read program. The We Run Club is in full swing this year. Hundreds of students will train for the Kids Marathon by exercising, stretching, and running on Wednesdays throughout April during the students' recess. They're training for the Kids Marathon, which will be in Pittsburgh in May. And last week, Washington supported the coin drive for the Special Olympics and helped the BP cheerleaders support their fashion show. They're still counting, so they don't know what the total is, but it usually does pretty well. And the students of Washington are currently collecting plastic grocery bags until Earth Day in April, so they can be recycled and turned into composite building materials. And they have their annual talent show coming up in April as well. For Independence Middle School, they are pleased to report that the Bold and Gold Events were very successful at IMS. The 8th grades participate in a program that's geared towards helping them with some of the social issues that go to when they happen to go under the high school. They'd like to thank all the parents and the staff for their time and donations, as well as the high school students who volunteered. IMS is in the process of planning for the 8th grade Fun Day and Staff Appreciation Luncheon, and they'd like to ask parents to send in baked goods and donations for both of these events. Lastly, there's an IMS Chick-fil-A Spirit Night planned for April 7th. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Solicitor's Report.
I have nothing to report this evening. A written report has been prepared, but will be provided to the superintendent for distribution to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any committee reports? Mrs. Buckley, curriculum? No? Finance? Mr. Amadis isn't here. We did have a combined...
Yeah, that was combined, I'm sorry to bring the data in.
Okay, sorry. Any public comments on agenda items this evening? Agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move into business items. I will turn over the Curriculum Committee to Mrs. Buckley, and I will request that Item 4 be held out.
There are four items total, and any others besides #4 held out. Hearing none, I move #1, Professional Development. #2, the Consortium of School Networking Institutional Membership. And #3, Bethel Park School District Special Education Plan for 2016 to 2019.
Second.
One second. Takes me a little longer to type than it does to write nowadays. Items 1 through 3 under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 8 to 0. Mrs. Buckley.
And Item #4 is the High School Course Selection Guide Addendum. Second, thank you.
Are you going to move it as-is? And then, or discussion? Is that the best way to do it?
If you're going to amend it, yes. You move it as-is, and then you would have a motion to amend. You would vote on whether or not to amend, and then you would be...
Okay, so, Mrs. Buckley, you moved it, and Mrs. Dobus, you seconded?
Yes.
My discussion or opinion on this item, sub-item 1, when we had our discussion at the Curriculum Meeting, I thought we discussed having a pilot program. And my interpretation of a pilot program is that we run it for that year, and then we revisit how it did before we make it a requirement or an add-on course.
I agree.
So I would like to amend Item 4, Sub-1, to just be STEAM requirement for Class of 2020, a pilot for the 2016-17 school year.
Do we even want the term requirement in there if it's a pilot?
I just think it's a pilot STEAM.
Okay, just STEAM for the Class of 2020, a pilot. I'm good with that, too.
Because it's not for every student, it's just a couple courses or a course.
Yeah, I understood it was just going to be for one group of students.
One section or something like that, right. So maybe just a STEAM pilot for the 2016-2017 year.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to amend that to say STEAM... STEAM Pilot for the Class of 2020 for the 2016-17 school year. And I assume the Class of 2020 then means it's a 9th grade class, is that correct? Because that was what they wanted, that it would be a 9th grade...
Yes. Do we also have to say we're removing the former language, or is it just automatic?
No, what you're doing is, and there's a motion to amend to read paragraph #1. Just read the whole paragraph.
STEAM Pilot for the Class of 2020 for the 2016-17 school year. So that's going to be in the Course Selection Guide.
Okay.
But do we have to put in what we're taking out of the Course Selection Guide that we already approved a month ago? Do we have to indicate that this replaces that language?
Well, it says to update the Bethel Park Course Selection Guide for the 16-17 school year.
I'll second your amendment.
So the second sentence is being eliminated, then?
Correct. We're kind of rewording the first sentence and eliminating the second sentence in this amendment.
So we have to vote on the amendment, and then we'll vote on the motion?
As amended.
So any other discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the amendment carries 8 to 0. Now we're back to the original motion that Mrs. Buckley made and Mrs. Dobus seconded as amended. Any discussion on that? All in favor of this motion as amended, say aye. Opposed? That carries 8 to 0. We will move on to the Personnel Committee, and Mrs....
There are seven items under Personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to hold out? If not, I move that we approve Item 1, Approval of Substitutes. Item 2, Approval of Extra Duty Responsibility Program. Item 3, Approval of Extra Duty Responsibility. 4, Attainment of Status of Professional Employee. 5, Acceptance of a Resignation. 6, Appointment of Personnel. And 7, Approval of Temporary Assignment.
I need a second.
Second.
Items 1 through 7 under Personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Christensen. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I wasn't here last week, I so I apologize for this, but did we get all the questions answered about #7 regarding the para-aid contract and changing? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I wasn't here. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry 8 to 0. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Pecusa.
Sorry, too much stuff.
It's all right, taken me a while to type it all in, too.
It is a little more difficult.
Yeah, I'm trying to get used to it.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Under Facility and Services Committee this evening, there are six items. Would anyone like any of them held out separately?
Number 6.
Number 6. So I will move the following five items under Facility and Services Committee. Entrance sign to the high school. Acceptance of the geotechnical proposal for the test warnings for the Hillside Slide. Award of waterline bid for Neil Armstrong Middle School project. Award of electrical bid for Neil Armstrong Middle School project, and the basketball hoops at Independence Middle School.
Second.
Items 1 through 5 under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Pecusa and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
Yeah, I have a question about #2. The way it's worded, it's kind of awkward. What does that actually entail?
It entails some additional test warnings, and actually preliminary going to mitigate those.
Okay, so the $12,481 is for the design, and the $11,324 is for the additional test warnings?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 1 through 5, those carry 8 to 0.
I move Item #6, Pathfinder School. Would you like me to read it?
No, second.
Second.
I just wanted to go on the record as saying I have a concern that this is being done too soon, and that we'll have to redo it later on in a couple of years. So I just wanted everyone to be prepared that we may very well have to pay again. I hope that they will stay closer to the $500 amount in that. Any other questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 8 to 0. Finance Committee. Mr. Means, will you take Finance Committee for me this evening?
Okay, there are... Nine items under Finance Committee. Would anybody like any of them withheld? Okay, seeing none, I move #1, March 2016 Salaries and Bills. #2, February 2016 Financial Report. #3, Budgetary Transfers. #4, Allegheny Intermediate Unit AIU Program and Services Budget. #5, Approval of Educational Services Agreement. #6, Adoption of Allegheny Intermediate Unit AIU Resolution. #7, Information Technology 2016-2017 Service and Maintenance Contract E-Rate. #8, Approval of the Purchase of Information Technology Equipment. And #9, Title IX Compliance Officer.
Second.
Items 1 through 9 under Finance have been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mr. Pecusa. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I think this is the one budget thing I was looking at, where the elevators, that was actually wrong, list of all the finances, the cost for the month rate, is that what we... Because there was something about elevators, $3,400, and I think that is for this budget here that we're talking about, Item 1. Or am I wrong? I'd like to know about those elevators.
That could have been in the bill.
Do we have any elevators?
Bill payment?
Yeah, so... Yeah, the bills are, it was for elevators, there's a whole bunch of things, $3,400. I just was curious, I guess, more so as to what was all going on. Is that like a monthly thing, that we're usually putting out $3,400 on repairs for elevators, or...
Was that inspection?
You're required to do elevator inspections. I think it's either quarterly or biannually, I'm not sure, but that part would be the cost for that. You'd have to look for sure to see if it was a repair.
Okay, so most likely it's not a monthly thing, if that much.
On elevator contracts, where you're on $10,000 per year for all the...
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on Finance items?
Out of curiosity, why is the Title IX Compliance Officer listed under Finance?
I wondered that myself. Finance.
Okay.
I don't think there's any additional fee involved with it.
Should we move it?
No, that's okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry 8 to 0. Mr. Means, I'll throw it back to you for Policy Committee.
Policy Committee, okay. This is to announce the first reading of Policy 823, Governing the Administration of Narcan. And I assume that is on the website, that policy is on there right now?
It will be tomorrow after the first reading. We need to clean it up. We've provided you with the policy this evening in its revised form. It'll be cleaned up in the morning, it'll be placed on the website.
The 50-word description of what this is, Nancy?
Just to reiterate what we talked about last week in the committee meeting, Narcan, or Narcan as it's known commercially, is an opioid antidote that would be used in the case of an opiate-related drug overdose. This would give our nurses the capability of administering it in each one of our K-12 schools should a staff or a student have an overdose. It'll also provide some procedural guidelines for that administration, for the maintenance of the medication, and the supervision of it, I guess. Training is also included.
And, excuse me, the last comment is, this is supposed to be safe if it's administered to somebody who is not actually undergoing an opiate overdose?
Yes, if it's given to someone who is not having an opioid overdose, it should not have any adverse effects, according to the distributors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dobus, would you take Other for me this evening?
Sure. As soon as I find it here. Other. I move one item, the Allegheny County Schools Health Insurance Consortium trustee position for the Southeast Region.
I need a second.
Second.
Item 1 under Other has been moved by Mrs. Dobus and seconded by Mrs. Rule. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we need a roll call for that? It says roll call.
Where?
They all say roll call.
Okay.
I just do voice votes. Sometimes we do roll calls, but it's not mandatory on...
You do a voice vote, if one individual says no, and it requires a roll call vote, then you can roll call, but since it was unanimous, it's not necessary.
And this was a vote for Judith E. Anzelik?
Right. Thank you. We are now to the portion of public comments on anything you wish to address the board on. You have two minutes at the microphone. Name and... Name and address, please.
My name is Bruce Thompson. I live on Thunderwood Drive and I'm the president of the girls soccer booster club. I'm here to further support the request of my fellow boosters club presidents that preceded me at your meetings for the board to enter in discussions with the union in order to establish fair and equitable salaries for the coaches of the school district sports teams. I ask that the board be open to discuss and approve an equitable pay schedule for all coaches without reducing any coach's current pay, establish that schedule at current market rates, and provide for future increases in salaries to be competitive with other school districts. We realize this can only be done by increasing the budget. We're not asking for this to be accomplished by taking money from other programs. The increase necessary to achieve an equitable and fair schedule for all our coaches is not only long overdue, it is justified and palatable in the overall budget. The time and effort coaches put into teaching our students is simply not compensated by the current salary structure. We believe that athletics is critical piece in the development of our athletes and in the identity of the community as a whole. Therefore, paying all of our coaches fairly and at market rate is consistent with the commitment our district makes to academics and facilities and is reasonable to be shared by the community to maintain the place among the top 10 schools in Western PA. Thank you for your consideration and your forward-focused leadership, our school district.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gina Brownfield. I live at 132 Iron Run Road. I came to this meeting with my son as a Boy Scout requirement. He's also a rising ninth grader. I know this isn't a question and answer thing, we just don't understand what that STEAM proposal is. And I don't feel like very much information has come home to the parents about it. And I have two older boys, one's in college and one has been applying to colleges. I certainly agree that the STEAM subjects are very important. I feel, though, that ninth grade is a bit late to have some kind of intro for that. I feel that it should be earlier than ninth grade and that time shouldn't be taken up in high school on a class like that. There isn't even enough time in the day for the really serious academic students to take everything that they want, if they want to max out on all the AP and honors classes. So I don't know what you really voted on, but I would not want that to be a required class at the high school. And thank you for all you do. I know there's a lot of time that goes into being on the school board.
Thank you. I will tell you what we did vote on. It is a pilot program as presented to us by some teachers from the high school, along with Ms. O'Rourke. It will be piloted on one group of ninth grade students, is our understanding. And then we'll have further discussion after that takes place as to whether it would be a requirement and/or how it would be handled in the scheduling processes at the high school.
So that will be considered?
No, it will just be one class, to my understanding. Is that, am I interpreting that correctly? If the board understood it, it will be one class, not every ninth grader.
And the specific thing removed was that it would be a requirement. So that's why it's a test first.
What kind of, how would you decide?
That I don't know. That's up to the teachers and the high school administration, how they're designing this pilot.
Amy, isn't this something that would have to be factored into the schedules?
Yes, and Ms. O'Rourke can probably provide you with more information if you want to contact her. She's in a training today and tomorrow, but she'll be back in the district on Thursday, I believe.
Okay. Sure.
And you can also go online, and that's what we've been doing to get a little better understanding of what it is. I mean, it sounds all great and a lot of times, just because something sounds great, that doesn't mean it's necessarily going to do it. And that's what your concern is. But if you go online, read all about STEAM and then there's STEM, too. STEAM has art added into it, as you may know already. But if you look at the benefits and then there's also drawbacks as well. So we're going to have to see what the pilot program brings here and weigh it out, but...
If I might have read, it's too late. I think this... And I guess, Mrs. Brownfield, the overall plan, there's a K-12 STEAM committee that's just beginning, but there are already some pilot programs and some initiatives that are going on throughout the district that would help introduce students to science, technology, engineering arts, and math. This program is a more formalized approach that would give every ninth grader, in the original proposal, would expose them to an opportunity to explore the integrated disciplines. So in this pilot program, what the board has approved this evening would allow a group of students to be notified that the opportunity is available and classes would be formed based on that. So, yes, students would be able to change their course selection once it's introduced.
Would you know that students are delivering a large...
Yes, yes, we discourage that.
They feel like you have, I mean, I wasn't for it either, but when you look at what colleges, I mean, selected colleges want, you almost have to do that in any way you want, also, it needs a large or hard thing. If you want to get to a big academic class, you almost can't. So this is a...
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for your comments. Anyone else? Then I'll move into board comments, Mrs. Dovis.
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Means?
Well, as usual, it's always good to see the number of students that are succeeding and doing great things. And I also went to the musical and it always astounds me, the level of performance that the students put out. And it was really a first-rate presentation again this year, so.
Absolutely, I agree.
Yep. Mrs. Buckley?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Spakusa?
Normally I don't have a lot to say, so I'm just going to add a couple of things. I've had the opportunity to address the National Merit Scholarship Luncheon last, this week or last week? I don't even know. I don't know what date it is anymore, so I apologize for that. It was a great, great experience to meet the students and also to understand and learn. Oh, look at this, Cindy has everything. I have this back at home, I don't have it here.
I put it in my book, I was...
But we had, I think, I believe, nine students this time and it's really interesting to find out what and where and how they're going to use their education in the future. And I asked them to make sure that they were able to come back for the induction into the Hall of Fame at some point in the future. I hope to see those students there. It's great to see both ends of that, I think. You know, we see the successes that Bethel Park has had around the world and I think it's tremendous. I'd just like to address one comment about the technical education. I recently had an opportunity to address the House Subcommittee in Pennsylvania on Technical Education because it's part of my career in being on the school board. And I don't know if everyone knows this, but the average age of a plumber and electrician in America right now is over 55 years old. So if we don't start stressing more technical education, I don't know who's going to fix your toilet or repair your lights, et cetera, et cetera. We need to make sure we have a well-rounded education. I know that the rigors of college are tremendous and the burdens are great, but we have to address all issues and you have to look at where the jobs are going to be in the future and they're not all going to be all through. It could be a combination of college and technical education, so I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you. Mrs. Rule?
The one thing that Steel Center has also boasted about is that if you come out with your plumbing degree or of one of your VOTech subjects, that you generally start your salary more than someone who's graduated with a four-year degree in a lot of your disciplines. Again, it depends on what you as an individual, where your talents are. But there are many jobs out there and parents and students need to look at what best suits them and what the job market calls for today, because there are a lot of opportunities out there. And the one thing, following up with that, I just want to say that Bethel Park, out of all the school districts, and we have about 16 of them, belonged to Steel Center and we are second. We have 101 students going there this year, which is a record for Bethel Park. The only one that was ahead of us was Baldwin with 104 students. So we're really giving our students a lot of opportunities within the school system. I also would like to mention that I've been working with the DECA students, the Chamber's been working fine with the DECA students, and we are having them tomorrow do some interviews of some of our businesses. There'll be two of our young ladies who will be interviewing our businesses and you will be able to see them on BPTV. And it will be honoring some of our mom and pop business owners for National Mom and Pop Business Owners Day, March 29th. So they'll be filming them, watch for them. So we're trying to give them a lot of experience that way. We also had a Christmas tree display, many of you saw that. And it brought in close to $2,000 for the DECA club. And then we had them do a bunny brunch, on which they did all the activities in conjunction with us, and they brought in about $300. We had 140 people attend the bunny brunch. So we are trying to give them as much business experience as we can and continue to do more with them every day some of the projects come up. So it's very interesting.
Great, thank you. Mr. Christensen?
Yeah, I just want to make one comment on that other class that we did approve, the Computer Science II class. You know, I think here the staff deserves some real recognition because this isn't just the process of ordering textbooks out of a, you know, from a vendor to go teach this class. I think this is the case where this teacher created a relationship with this CMU professor through a Big Data competition. And so the thing that's really amazing is that, you know, we've got this relationship with a CMU professor who's, this school is one of the top, maybe right after Stanford, maybe tied to Stanford with, you know, computer science, you know, teaching, you know, capability. And we have a relationship and this professor is going to help teach our kids about data structure and algorithms, which is, you know, a pretty, you know, leading-edge topic, especially for Big Data, which is some of the, you know, really emerging areas of computer science. You hear about it all the time. And definitely it is a field of, you know, science, computer science and engineering that is just going to, you know, explode even further over the next decade. So I think that the staff deserves, you know, some recognition for making this relationship happen.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out. Mr. Workmeister?
Since I'm last, I'll try not to repeat too much happy spring to everybody. Also, what I didn't hear mentioned was the number nine rating for Bethel Park out of 100. So that's congratulations to everybody involved with that. And of course, like Wes said, I'd just like to reiterate this, all the students for sports, scholastic, military, congratulations there. Also Ron Ryer again on his tech award. And being that I heard the magic word eagle, you know, working on scouting and that, I'm very partial to scouting, so I just wanted to give you a word of advice, make sure you get that eagle. Talking about opportunities, you get that on your resume, that is definitely a big plus, you know, for a lot of cases. I can say that personally, I ended up hiring somebody that was an Eagle Scout over somebody else, so congrats on working on that, too. And that's basically it for now.
Thank you. Mrs. Rose?
Yes, you know, each month we come in, we hear the good news report and it seems like the list of acknowledged students gets longer and longer. And that's a great thing in very diverse fields as well. But we know that behind those students, there are teachers, mentors, coaches, who and sponsors of organizations that promote and support those kids. And so two of those people are in the audience tonight, Mr. O'Neill and Mr. Maslin. And I just wanted to thank you for the support and successes that you brought to the students that were highlighted this evening. We know that your encouragement is what helps students to succeed, so we thank you for that and thank all of the coaches and sponsors and mentors out there who do good things for kids. Through your efforts, our students are able to shine and we thank you.
It's always hard to go last. I can just say happy spring, happy Easter, and everyone keep up the great work. It's wonderful to start with, start the meetings off with such upbeat and great reports. I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.